Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and successor agency to the redevelopment agency and housing authority meeting of Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Please join me in standing for the National Anthem and remain standing, and together we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I could sense some anxiety there. I thought some of you were worried I was going to sing the National Anthem. Don't worry. I don't think that'll ever happen. Okay, so now is the time for a moment of solemn expression, and today we're very fortunate to have Pastor Jordan Hanson from Mesa Church, our neighbor, here to lead us in a moment of solemn expression. Pastor Hanson, you have the floor.
Wonderful. I'll go ahead and pray, but I just want to say, Mayor Stevens, step out in faith and sing with boldness. Why don't we all bow our heads? Father, I pray that you would give us wisdom this evening to help grow the kind of community where people can thrive. Each of us are a part of Costa Mesa because we love living here. And so, Lord, we pray that you would give wisdom to Mayor Stevens, Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Marr, Council Member Manuel Chavez, Council Member Lauren Gamaros, Council Member Jeff Harland, Council Member Don Harper, and Council Member Arlis Reynolds, and all of the city staff that is working so hard to create an environment and a culture where people can thrive. We pray for our schools, our principals, our teachers, and most of all, our students, as they are all filing back in order. Lord, we pray that our schools would be safe and free from violence, free from threat, Lord, that they would be places where people can learn and, again, grow into the kinds of humans that you desire. We pray for our fire and police departments, Lord, that you would help them bring safety and order and protect them, Father, we pray. Give us wisdom, protect us, give us peace, and, Lord, most of all, give us grace for each other in our conversations regarding policy this evening, remembering that every human is sacred. Thank you for allowing us to live in Costa Mesa. We bless it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we're very happy to have three presentations today. The first presentation is a commendation from the council to Bryce Sheridan, who is the winner of the 49th Annual Will Jordan Classic. It was Will Jordan Classic is named after our former mayor, Will Jordan. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we got to do some other stuff. We got to do-
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, we need to do roll call and close session report.
Yes, yeah, roll call. Roll call, sorry.
Let the record reflect that all council is present.
Okay. Do you have any close session report?
And no, no reportable action was taken in close session. Thank you.
So lucky to have such a great staff that make sure when I mess up, they fix me. Okay, so getting back to it. So I said Will Jordan, former mayor, 49th Annual, and it's Bryce Sheridan who won it this year. And the Will Jordan Classic is a special tournament. People come from all around Southern California to play in the tournament. Not sure if some of you know this, but do you know that there are two U.S. Open Champions that won the Will Jordan Classic? Bonus points if you know who they are. Mark O'Meara and Scott Simpson. Bryce, did you know that? Yeah, of course you did. And so Bryce Sheridan now has his name up on the trophy with U.S. Open Champions and great professional golfers. Bryce Sheridan is, we have at, I have some items I want to read in the script, but, and I consider myself a member of this family. We have a family and a community at the golf course at Costa Mesa Country Club. There are people that get a lot of great enjoyment and peace out of that city facility. I'm there quite a bit. Bryce is obviously there. He wouldn't have won the tournament. Some of our friends here, our mutual friends, are here to support Bryce, and it's just wonderful that somebody from our community and our family won the tournament this year. So Bryce is a longtime Costa Mesa resident, and his love for golf began at age 12. He spent his childhood playing golf at various golf courses with his father, Scott Sheridan, and his grandfather, George Sheridan. Bryce also played in Costa Mesa American Little League, and I remember way back when in the 90s, when he was a Little Leaguer, and here we are today. He played on the Costa Mesa High School golf team, the Mustangs, and he played on the OCC golf team. Bryce has qualified for the World Long Drive Championship three times and won the District Long Drive Championship in 2005. This year Bryce won the, as I said, the 49th Annual Will Jordan Classic, where he shot seven under par for a gross score. That's without considering handicap, a gross score of 135. That's an average of 67, a little more than 67 for the two rounds. We play it, but they play it both courses, Mesa Linda and Los Lagos. So Bryce, we're really honored to have you at the City Council. If you want to come up and just say a few words, come on up to the podium. I'm going to read briefly from the commendation, and then what we'll do is we'll take a picture, and we can invite all your friends to come up and take a picture with the council and go on social media. It'll go viral, and everybody will see it. Okay? Okay, so Bryce, you want to come up and say a few words?
Hi. Hello, everybody. I just want to say thank you. This is an honor, pleasure. Thank you for having me, and thank you, everybody, for my support, family, friends. Long time, hard work, lots of practice and everything, and just want to say thank you so much. Really appreciate the award.
Yeah. And then one other thing I want to say is just right the week before that tournament, I saw Bryce, and he was playing right behind us at the Costa Mesa High School Alumni Tournament. So he is not only a terrific player, but he also plays in all these tournaments for all these worthy causes throughout town. And I just want to read one excerpt of the actually commendation that we're going to provide to you, is "The City of Costa Mesa recognizes the talent and skill of Bryce Sheridan, and we commend him for his persistence and dedication to the sport of golf in the great city of Costa Mesa. Now therefore, I, John B. Stevens, Mayor of the City of Costa Mesa, do hereby proclaim this special commendation to Bryce Sheridan in recognition of winning this year's 49th Annual Will Jordan Classic on August 6, 2022." Thank you. So now I'd like to invite the council to come down, and we'll take a photo with Bryce and his entourage. Our second proclamation is the 2022 Hunger Awareness Month. One in every six children does not know where their next meal will come from, and 20% of Californians face food insecurity every day. For many of us, a daily meal is a simple choice of what to eat, but for families and individuals facing hunger, it is often an impossible choice between food or other crucial needs, such as housing, medicine, or a bill for childcare. September is Hunger Action Month, to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to engage the public in action to combat hunger in every part of our community. Tonight, we welcome the Second Harvest Food Bank of Orange County's Director of Programs and Services, Ellie Din, to accept this proclamation. Ms. Din, are you here in the chambers?
Yeah.
Hi. Can you come up to the podium?
Yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Din, I'm going to just read a little excerpt from the proclamation, and then we'll have you say a few words, and then we'll take the photo opportunity. Okay, so more than 800,000 individuals in Orange County on average rely on food provided by the Community Action Partnership of Orange County, Orange County Food Bank, the Second Harvest Food Bank of Orange County, and Abound Food Care. Together, these agencies form the Orange County Food Hunger Alliance. The Orange County Food Hunger Alliance has distributed more than 82 million pounds of food in the last year through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. The City of Costa Mesa is committed to working with the Orange County Alliance in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness to the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. Now therefore, I, John B. Stevens, Mayor of the City of Costa Mesa, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Hunger Action Month and call on this observance, and call this observance to the attention of our residents. Ms. Din, you have the floor.
You said it so well, but thank you so much for having me. I just wanted to say thank you so much to the City Council and Mayor Stevens for recognizing September as Hunger Action Month. I'm a Costa Mesa resident, so I'm excited to be here today, and I just wanted to mention that some of our largest and most influential partners are actually in the city of Costa Mesa, so Share Ourselves, Someone Cares Soup Kitchen, Orange Coast College, Vanguard University. Both colleges have pantries on campus, which is really great. So I just want to say thank you for your support of the work that's happening in the city of Costa Mesa, so your support of them and your support of the Hunger Alliance. So thank you so much.
All right, council. Okay, our third proclamation or our third presentation is a proclamation for 2022 National Child Awareness Month. National Child Awareness Month is celebrated each September to raise awareness and focus our nation's attention on our greatest asset, our children. This local effort began here in Costa Mesa by the Festival of Children Foundation Founder Sandy Sagers from Daniels, who's here with us tonight. Since 2008, Ms. Sagers from Daniels and the Festival of Children have dedicated each September to recognizing the critical contributions to children and youth charities and nonprofits make to benefit the lives of children across California and our nation. Tonight, we welcome Ms. Sandy Sagers from Daniels to the podium, and while she's coming up, and then if you could come up, Sandy, and then I'll read from the proclamation. But I just want to say what an honor it was to be at the Festival of Children kickoff last week, and it was always a beautiful event. It's one of my favorite events, if not my favorite event of the year, and what a pleasure and an honor it was to be allowed to say a few words at that, because it's a terrific event and it's a treasure for the community. Okay, let me read this proclamation now. Enough of that. That's off the charts. That's off the script. So from the proclamation, "September is National Child Awareness Month, a time to focus the attention of our nation on the most critical issues facing our children today. Many individuals and organizations work to provide crucial services that have a direct and long-lasting effect on the lives of our children and youth. The Festival of Children recognizes the critical contributions of all charities and nonprofit organizations that provide access to health care, social services, education, and the arts, sports, and other services that benefit millions of children across California and our nation. Now therefore, I, John B. Stevens, Mayor of the City of Costa Mesa, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Child Awareness Month and encourage Costa Mesa residents to honor and support local children's organizations that are committed to enriching and enhancing the lives of our children." Ms. Sagers from Daniels, you have the floor if you'd like to say a few words.
Again, thank you for being there the other night, and I'm so sorry, it was 95 degrees in the building. It's a thrill to be able to do this. This is our 21st Annual Festival of Children, which just kicked off this last weekend, so if I look a little tired, it's only because of that. I'm not as young as I was on Saturday. But to be a part of Costa Mesa all this time, and we actually did one children's festival in North Carolina one weekend in 2007, just to see if we could do it outside, and it was very difficult. So we're still here in Costa Mesa, but thank you to all of you for what you do for the children of Costa Mesa, as well as supporting the initiatives and the National Child Awareness Month, which was, again, just passed by, it was the United States Senate for the 15th year. We were just thrilled that it happened, even with what's all going on in Washington right now. They understand the importance of our kids and taking care of them. So thank you to all of you for doing this for all of the children of Costa Mesa and Orange County. Thank you.
Public comments, we heard at this time, people that want to make public comments have three minutes. You're going to get a tone at two minutes to wrap it up. After three minutes, the mic cuts off. You can speak about anything you want, except for things that are on the main agenda. So anything you want, including the consent calendar, except for things that are on our main agenda. So if you want to speak in the chambers, come on up on both sides, please. If you want to speak, you're on Zoom, push star nine or the hand raise function, and then when it's your turn to speak, push star X, and then we'll give you the floor. So we'll just move right along here. Ma'am, you're first.
I brought evidence. I brought evidence with me.
Oh, yeah, sure. Evidence.
Have my evidence.
Why don't we get that displayed before we start your time?
Okay. The police report's okay not to display, because, you know, it speaks for itself, you know.
Okay, hold on one second.
With lots of noise disturbance. And they'll be right here?
It should be, yeah.
Okay.
And we can see it on this, we should be able to see it on the screen at some point in time.
Okay, so this is about gym 12. We're just going to go really fast through these pictures. You can see the 10 right there and where the door's open, and if you look close, you'll see a fan down there. That's where they have their gym sessions with the base. I guess you can't really zoom into these. Okay, so there it is. You can clearly see the fan, because they can't get proper circulation. Okay, there you can see the 10 really good. Okay, so that's where I live. That's my fence. That's how far away the gym is. You can't really see it. There, the front door is always open whenever it's in. That was probably five something. These are the police reports. Okay, so you can't see the evidence. That's awesome. So anyways, so this is a standard line that goes right here. I'm just going to have to show you right here, and you'll have to go through the evidence. It was all emailed to you guys. So that's a standard line. The one that has right above is going to be a plane right above my head, okay? So that's right above this 60 marker, okay? That was taken on 9:03 at 9:17 in the morning. So you can clearly see these repeated baselines at 5:36 in the morning, this morning. You can clearly see those on the paper. They are way different, okay? And here we go at 5:41, constant boom, boom. You can clearly see them right here, and then you can see where they drop the base and drop it away, and they come right back. You can clearly see it on the pictures. They're supposed to be emailed to you. So that's at 5:41 in the morning. This is at 6:45 in the morning on 9:05. So this is my holiday morning at 6:45 in the morning. Thank you very much. Here is 6:46, just insane at the end, okay? And here we go again, just insane, just boom, 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 as much as they want. I mean, this is insane, okay? So you guys got all the pictures. All of them are dated. It goes, the date is at the, it'll say screenshot, and then the date, and then it's the time. But I really want to bring this up. I don't have much time. This is the Costa Mesa General Plan, page N6. You'll see on the side that there's not supposed to be any noise coming out of a gym at all. State law, okay? And then it says, these are your, you know, your city things, saying that you're supposed to stick up for the citizens and not let this type of stuff go on. Whenever I got home at 5:25 today, there was no base, but they clearly had the side door open. You could hear the workout. They're on their intercom, you know, working out. I don't understand why we have to listen to this gym and why it continues to wake me up. I email almost daily, you know, to Scott Drapkins. I email him almost daily, our, you know, charts, and nothing's being done, nothing. The cops can't do anything. Code enforcement says I'm crazy, and they can't get the readings. I'm sitting behind three trailers, and I'm getting readings like this. I have a concrete wall behind me, cinder blocks, you know, base just boom, 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 bounces off everything. But this has to stop. It has to stop. Somebody has to stop it. And I'm done. Okay, I'm out of time. The CUP from 1992 was the only one I can get ahold of. Read page 11, 3 and 4, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you didn't get a beep. You didn't get a beep, but your time is up.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
But can you please take care of it, please?
There's a lot of good content.
5:14 in the morning is awfully early to wake up.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Humphrey, you have the floor.
Good evening, council.
Hold on, before you go, we got the beep back? The beep? Should be a beep? I didn't hear it before. Okay, so I'll just keep an eye on it. I'll do like this when you get to one.
Okay.
Go ahead.
City Council Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. I note, with displeasure, of course, that you have, in fact, passed Measure K to go on the ballot, and my concern here is, is that you had the perfect opportunity to simply do what you wanted to do, which was make sure you made enough affordable housing in this community to affect your RINA. You should be aware that to achieve your RINA right now, under the normal guidelines, you're going to have to put in about 50,000 housing units to make that 11,000 RINA ultimately, because the low end, you're not going to get enough into it until you get there. So please keep that in mind. I appreciate the fact that that's happened. But all you had to do is just clearly define what affordable housing was, rather than move the major portion of the industrial, commercial area in Costa Mesa into a place where the community had no say over what was going to happen. I understand they're going to have this chance, the vision, but my experience with the vision that's happened in the past is that nobody listens to it anyway. They do what they want to do. So clearly, I have a lot of concerns about what's going to happen, and the reason that was there in the first place, that Y was put into place, was simply because the councils and the developers and what have you were not listening to the community. They were doing what they thought was the best thing, and we have a number of projects out there that, quite honestly, did not better the Costa Mesa landscape or the Costa Mesa process, and certainly were not a part of what the community thought was appropriate. Having said that, we now know how that goes, and we know that it's on the ballot, and I stand for one, to stand against that Measure K, because it takes away the right of the community to have an absolute say in what goes on. And we all should be aware that Measure Y never kicks in until somebody wants more on the land that was allowed under the general plan that existed at that time. And that allowed an awful lot. 9,000 housing units were allowed within that plan, so you could have worked out getting where you needed to get to. So you could have worked out getting where you need to get to. But in fact, you choose to take away the power of the community to decide how they're going to go in the future. I am sorry you did that, and I, like you said, I will be working tirelessly against that. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Harper, in fact, stood fast to the people of Costa Mesa. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, so we have a thing that's going wrong with our tone. So when you get to a minute, I'm going to hold my hand up, so you could see that visual cue. You have the floor.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stevens, council members, staff, and fellow audience. My name is Keri Mizera. I am the executive director of Renaissance School International, the first trilingual immersion school in Orange County. We are a for-profit tuition-based school, so we are only fully funded by tuition, and we pay all the applicable taxes. We have been at the Mesa Verde community since 2011. We fell in love with the community, and we also have made a lot of positive impact in the community in the areas of education, culture, and economics. All our families in the school are frequent shoppers of the shopping centers. And every day, you know, you can count on them with Target shopping bags or Starbucks cups, you know, in hand. So they love shopping and just visiting the community and spending also. Over the years, many of our families have also planted roots in the city of Costa Mesa by purchasing homes or renting. We now have an opportunity to call 1600 Adams, our new future home. It is the previous 24-hour fitness building, and we are looking forward to making that an attractive landmark in the city. So we want to invite the citizens of Costa Mesa and all of you to come to our info session. We'll be hosting two info sessions next week. The first one is going to be Thursday at 6:30 PM at the location, and the following one is going to be September 17, Saturday morning at 10:30 AM. We look forward to answering questions to the community and also have your support. We would really appreciate your support for that project also. I wanted to make sure that you RSVP, so we will be mailing out invitations to the neighboring residents in that area. So that will be coming in the mail, and I hope you'll RSVP to come see us. For citizens who prefer to speak Mandarin Chinese or Spanish, we would have staff there that will be able to speak the native languages with you. Thank you so much for your time.
That's easy for you to say. Okay, so, okay, so Ms. Tanaka, you have the floor. Remember, I'm going to wave at you at one minute.
Okay. I'm going to keep my comments pretty brief tonight. Good evening, Council. My name is Jen Tanaka. I'm a resident of Costa Mesa. I am also a board member of the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets. And I just came here tonight to personally thank everyone inside and outside of this room that helped to make our Bright Lights campaign a resounding success. We gave away, over the course of only about two weeks, over 2,500 bicycle lights for free to commuters and to students. Over several different kinds of events, we did some street distributions on Harbor, on 19th, on Bristol. And we also did some direct distributions to schools. We did direct distributions to some of our nonprofit partners such as Soy. We were part of the Awesome Back to School event at Shalimar Park. Thank you to Councilmember Chavez for our invitation to that. And I also want to specifically thank Councilmembers Reynolds, Marr, and Chavez for coming out and doing street distributions with us. That was really great. And I especially want to thank Councilmember Reynolds for not only coming out and giving her time, but also helping promote the event, which was incredibly helpful to us and I think really got the word out. So I'm really grateful to all of you who supported that. We are so proud at the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets to bring a grant from the Southern California Association of Governments and the Go Human program to Costa Mesa and to get dollars working directly in our community to help our streets be safer. I've seen the lights out on the streets. I know that Councilmember Reynolds saw them on the streets. So it's really wonderful to see them out in the wild and making everyone safer. So thank you very, very much. We couldn't have done it without our wonderful volunteers and, of course, support from the city. We also got wonderful support from the staff. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Brett Atencio-Thomas, our active transportation coordinator, who helped us coordinate the light purchases and to help us with logistics and brought his experience from LA to bear on the project. So thank you. I really appreciate it. And we will be in touch with more projects, I'm sure, because we've got a lot more lights to give out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ma'am, you've got the floor. Same thing, I'll try to remember to wave at you at one minute.
Okay, I'll pay attention. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members and staff. My name is Claudia Tebbs, and I'm here representing the Master Circle neighborhood, as we did not want to take over your entire meeting tonight. As you know, we fully oppose the Cup for the retail and distribution of cannabis, PA 2127, at 1072 Bristol, which is directly behind our neighborhood and less than 50 feet from the first house and less than 100 feet from my daughter's bedroom window. We were delighted by the Planning Commission's vote of 7-0 against the Cup and the feedback that we received from the Planning Commission on August 8. Some of the comments were that the proposed development would be materially detrimental to other properties in the area, that they were asking for hours that no other business has, except for Al Capulco, which is not directly behind the neighborhood, that the level of traffic is going to be bad and it's going to be noticeable. Location is important, and this is not a good location, that they shoehorned a use into a location that is not for this use. It was wonderful also to have the opportunity to meet the mayor and Councilwoman Gamaros at the chief's meet and greet on August 22. We will be reaching out to all the council members and inviting them to come out and take a look at the location and visit our neighborhood. And finally, we are all registered voters in Costa Mesa, and we're requesting that you please enforce Measure Q and protect our neighborhood. We will continue our efforts to oppose this until the appeal is retracted or until the results are in our favor. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is John Hawley. I'm a Costa Mesa resident, and I'm the owner of Railmakers Incorporated on West 18th Street. We've been in business in Costa Mesa for 52 years. 50 years of that spent on the West Side. I'm speaking tonight about the language used to describe the industrial area within the West Side. And the measure states that it's outdated. And I'm wondering how you can describe productive businesses, whether large or small, whether that be Clay Valve on the corner of 17th and Placentia, who employs 400 people, over 100 of those Costa Mesa residents. And they're the manufacturers of leading-edge valves and devices for military. It's a worldwide corporation. This is the headquarters of it. To family businesses, there's many, many family-owned, family-operated businesses there. And I understand the rock and the hard place you're in with the state and the need for affordable housing. I have four kids. Only one of them can afford to buy a house in Costa Mesa, so I'm familiar with that. But the housing that you need could easily be built through the overlay plans, of which there's three of, over the West Side, that allows anyone, any developer, to step up, offer to buy a property, and build residential. It's plain and simple, and it has been done many times successfully. The method that is described in Measure K is zone change. And we have learned, as West Side business owner over the years, what zone change means. It's been described in public meetings by consultants. A council, I'm not saying this council would do it, but a council changes a zone to residential from industrial. And then through ordinances that affect the operations of businesses, truck traffic, hours of operations, noise, et cetera, force the businesses out. And then what your ultimate goal is accomplished, the businesses are forced out. Nobody cares where they have to go. Do they have to move to Riverside? Where do they have to go? Nobody cares about that. You care about this initial goal, which, like I say, I understand you're in a tough spot. But this is disrespectful to the businesses over there. And the language used to describe the West Side, I figure, I feel, is deceptive in the way this is explained to the community. Now, Councilmember Reynolds?
I'm sorry. I shouldn't, I should have given you a one-minute warning. Your time is actually up, so it's my fault. But that doesn't mean you get any more time. All right? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, let me turn your mic on. There you go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stevens, and Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Marr, and the City Council, and everyone here, and those watching from home. My name is Barbara Morahiro. I'm a longtime resident of Costa Mesa, the City of the Arts, and I'd like to invite all of you to our fourth annual Orange Coast Wild and Scenic Film Festival, right here in Costa Mesa on Saturday, September 24. This unique film festival presents documentary films created to inspire environmental activism and a love of nature by filmmakers from all over the world. The Wild and Scenic Film Festival originated over 20 years ago in Nevada City, California, and some of us, including Councilmember Arlis Reynolds, have traveled north to enjoy this fascinating festival in person. Our local version this year features 10 carefully selected short films, chosen from the over 180 films presented at the Northern California Festival, with environmental themes ranging from a cleanup of Alaskan marine debris, rescuing orphaned elephants in Kenya, restoring a river in Pennsylvania, building tiny homes in fire-ravaged Butte, California, to a veterinarian treating wild animals in Mozambique. But wait, there's more. We also have two award-winning filmmakers who appear in person with other special guests here at the screening to participate in a question-and-answer session and a special reception. Our fourth Orange Coast Wild and Scenic Film Festival, presented at the Orange Coast Unitarian Universalist Church campus on 2845 Mesa Verde Drive East on the corner of Adams and Mesa Verde. There will be two in-person screenings there on Saturday, September 24, at 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM, featuring the special guests. And we'll also have a virtual option, which will be a recorded program you can view at home. Tickets are on sale through our ticketing website, which is QUDIO, Q-U-D-I-O. And you go to the website, QUDIO, you scroll down and select the Wild and Scenic Film Festival at Orange Coast Unitarian Universalist Church here in Costa Mesa, and the tickets will be on sale on the website, but also there'll be some at the door, depending if we sell out. And thank you all for all your good work to make our city such a vibrant home for the wide variety of arts, including this exceptional Wild and Scenic Film Festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huffman, you've got the floor.
Thank you. I don't have to say my name, so.
Pardon me? Yeah.
Okay. There you go. I've been looking at all the parcels targeted for rezoning on the housing element map. Not to be confused with the Measure K map. Most of the parcels are north of the 405, and the rest are on Harbor, Placentia Street, West 17th, 18th, and 19th Streets, Sobeka area, and the Fairview Developmental Site. Excluded was Newport Boulevard and East 17th Street. The map shows densities ranging on the low end of 40 units per acre up to 90 units per acre. So future city councils will be deciding how to design these new high-density residential neighborhoods. One big 90-unit complex, 90 units per acre complex, can indeed create a virtually self-contained community. Witness the 750-unit apartment complex on Anton, just now being completed. Across the street is another equally huge complex that was built a few years earlier. I have yet to discover a park that those residents can go to, although the new art museum will have a nice plaza to hang out at. My point is, who is going to plan the city for these huge complexes that are going to be built throughout the city? Developers or the city? Will the voters have a voice? I would like to know what each of you envisions that plan to be before we relinquish our ability to vote on these major planning changes for our city. I noticed on Facebook that our Planning Commission chairman points to Irvine as a city moving forward in the right direction, with apartment complexes replacing the office and industrial buildings in the airport area. Is that what we are aiming for? If so, let's hear what your visions and plans are for these future neighborhoods. How do they integrate with the existing community and the transportation system? How and where would the new parks, plazas, facilities, gathering places be situated to serve the needs of the new development? I have my own ideas, but I also respect the concerns of the residents who have invested in the city and want to have some say-so about the future. Let's do the planning first, then let the residents vote on those plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald, you have the floor.
Well, welcome back, everyone. We all needed time to recover from that last city council meeting on August 2, which was pretty chaotic and confusing when it came to the ballot measure. Despite the claim that the measure was two years in the making, it wasn't until the August 2 meeting, which was right before the deadline to approve the measure for the November ballot, that the, quote, "final version" was presented to the council. It was still a mess when it was voted on by this body. The ballot measure that was presented after the hearing on the item had begun required several breaks to review the language, which was difficult to read because of redlining. Section 4 of the document erroneously amended the wrong section. The document presented to you and voted on referenced subsection C when it should have been subsection E. The city attorney must have picked that up in her analysis, because the document posted on the city's website didn't change until that analysis was posted. This is what happens when you rush something, and this was obviously rushed. Why? Some members of the public wouldn't have time to fully digest it. It's pretty indigestible. There are so many things that are wrong about Measure K. Three minutes isn't enough, so I'll break it down over the next few weeks. Tonight, I'll focus on one part of that circus of a proceeding. As part of the motion to approve, there was a last-minute substitution of the ballot language. That language was clearly prepared before the meeting, but watching the video, it seems like few, except the maker of the motion, was privy to the language, because Mayor Stevens and others seemed stunned by it. The public certainly was, because it was different from the language contained in the staff report. The public had no time to review it, or, most importantly, they had no opportunity to comment on it. This attempt to keep the public in the dark on this ballot measure exemplifies why we have the Brown Act. California Gov. Code Section 54957.5A provides that documents distributed to all or majority of the members of a legislative body of the local agency in connection with the matter subject to discussion or consideration at an open meeting of the legislative body or public records substitute disclosure under the California Public Records Act. That section further provides that those documents must be made available for public inspection upon request without delay. How does one request a document if you already closed the public comment?
30 seconds.
What do you, how do you comment when it shows up on the screen after the motion? I raised my hand on the Zoom, but that was to no avail. The process was flawed. When I voted for some of you, I thought you'd do better than this. This isn't transparency. It's certainly not fair to the public. I would like to know what you intend to do about what I believe is a violation of the Brown Act. Flawed process, flawed measure, no on K. Thank you.
Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to read a letter to the editor that was written by Eleanor Egan. She's, as you all know, is a former city attorney. She's a city activist, a very popular resident. And she starts with her edit. It says, "Measure K is the city council's proposal to gut the voter..." It says, "Measure K is the city council's proposal to gut the voter-approved Measure Y. The effect of Measure K would take control of land use from the people and turn it over to developers of high-end and high-density housing." A few facts. Measure Y, by its own terms, exempts all affordable housing projects required by law. Measure Y does not prohibit any housing projects, but only requires a public vote for certain major projects. Major Y applies only to projects residential or non-residential that require exceeding the limits of the existing general plan and zoning law. Measure Y passed by more than 2 to 1 vote of the people in 2006. There is no requirement in Measure K that any new housing be affordable. There is nothing in Measure K that would limit the sales price, rent, that would be charged for houses, condominiums, or apartments. There is nothing in Measure K that would mitigate the effects of high-density projects on increased vehicular traffic, noise, air pollution, and other adverse effects. Any projects a city council approved under the terms of K would be immune from the referendum. The public would have no way to reverse the council's decision. Although a new housing project may increase net property tax revenue for the first five years or so, the cost to Costa Mesa taxpayers of providing services to prod, to this project is substantially greater than the revenue every year. The people of Costa Mesa must continue to say and have their city's future via the vote against Measure K. Those are Eleanor Egan's words. And my few things that I'm going to add to this.
One, one minute.
That K is an egregious breach of confidence. The voters banded together six years ago and pushed back against a council that was not representing the community appropriately. Six years later, look where we are. The last meeting was a frantic scramble. It was really embarrassing. K is like for kamikaze. The only way to fight it is with your vote. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I don't think we have anybody else in the chambers. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody else for public comment on Zoom?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, let's close public comment, and then what we'll do is, we'll have Councilmember comments, committee reports, and suggestions. We're going to start on the East Side, District 6, with Councilmember Jeff Harlan. Councilmember Harlan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome back, everyone. I'm going to be very brief, just continuing on the theme of National Child Awareness Month. I first want to give thanks to our city staff for the new improvements at Jordan Park over on the East Side on Tustin, next to the Boys and Girls Club. Staff did a tremendous job, public services, as well as Parks Department, getting this in place. I know the community has asked for this and has been waiting quite patiently, and, and our staff and contractors were able to, to construct this quite quickly in the last several weeks. It's a great playground area, and I've seen tons of kids enjoying it so far, so please come on out, and we will have an official grand opening, I think sometime next week, so look on city's website for that. And then, secondly, I just wanted to make a quick announcement for, again, children. The Kaiser Woodland PFO is hosting a pickleball social this weekend, so since pickleball's becoming so popular, glad to see that people are picking up on it as a potential charity event, so if you are interested, check out their website. And, yeah, that's it for tonight.
All right, wonderful, well done. So now we're going to District 1 with Councilmember Donald Harper. Councilmember, you have the floor.
Hey, no comments this evening, thank you.
All right, thanks. Moving on to District 5, Councilmember Arlis Reynolds. Councilmember Reynolds, you have the floor.
Do I need to, okay, here we go. Welcome back. Girl, a little rusty using the tools here, whoops. It's been, it's been a really nice month, of course, very hot week we've had, but I do have quite a few notes. So, Mr. Holly, if you're still listening, I'll reach out to you as well, I just wanted to express my appreciation for your comments and concerns and reaching out to me directly. He got cut off right when he was about to say something to me, so I'm really eager to know what those, what the remainder of those comments were. We've heard a couple of comments related to noise disturbances, and I know our staff are looking into that, I think we got an email on that after our meetings had started today. I have noticed, and I'm hearing comments about increased vehicle noise as well, so I think that's the PD's department, maybe. If you guys, I'll follow up, but I'm really interested in what controls we might have related to vehicle noise and, and ways to sort of dampen that. I think I saw that Newport Beach did something related to that. And then I've also been getting some notes about helicopters flying really low on the West Side multiple times a day, and, and I'm being told that it looks like private helicopters, not related to any of our normal police activity, so if anyone can get me information on that, it's something that seems to have been a, a recent concern, but almost a daily issue now. Okay, so, a couple, thanks, lots has been happening in the last month. I wanted to express my appreciation for Almaraes and Sergio for coming in on a day off to, to put some flyers together on our housing and rental assistance programs. I was able to go to an event that many parents were at on the West Side, and they really appreciated that information, so thank you for making that available. I've asked our chief to also, our chief, our chief city manager, to also give a, again, just a quick reminder of that information because it, it is so valuable and needed in our community right now. Also, thanks to the staff and cert volunteers who staffed our cooling center. Always good to, to know that our, our muscles are in shape to, to get that cooling center open, and, and I know some people utilize that, so thank you to the, the team there. I know Brenda was part of that as well, thank you. And of course, thank you to the, the CMAB's team and the collaboration with our, our transportation staff on the bright lights distribution. This, again, was giving out hundreds of lights to people who are walking or biking in our community. It is so much safer when people walking or biking at night have lights on, so that was a really impactful event, also motivating. And I was really struck, you know, when you stand in the same place for two hours, you realize how many people are walking and biking in our community. Kids walking or biking to school, adults walking or biking to work or to do errands, so this really was impactful, and I appreciate everyone who was involved in that. A couple comments related to Hunger Month. I was able to visit an event at Orange Coast College with the Abound Food Care Program. I think this is the sort of next iteration of Waste Not OC, but it's this really incredible collaboration of organizations who collect food that would otherwise be thrown away. They work with Orange Coast College and their culinary program to turn that food into not just meals, but meals that a doctor has actually designed, so that they're very healthy meals. And then they work with community organizations to get those meals out to people who need it. So it was just this really beautiful collaboration on something that we know is a, a need, and I'll, I'll be sharing some information too. We want to make sure, they were already partners with a lot of our local organizations, but if you have any organizations in mind that would be great to receive those meals, we want to make sure they're plugged into that program. It was really impressive. I also learned recently that we have a waitlist for our Senior Meals on Wheels program, and I heard that we're starting to, I think as maybe some of our COVID funds are going away, we're actually reducing the amount of meals we're delivering to our seniors. So I want to get some more information on that. I don't know if that's our Parks and Community Services or Senior Center. If we have a waitlist for seniors receiving meals, I really want to understand what that is and how we can make sure that, that we can reach those seniors who are signing up because they need food. I also noticed that we have a waitlist for Community Gardens of over 115 people, so I think that shows really strong demand for Community Gardens. If we can look into some ideas about that, that would be great as well. Finally, again, related to our housing and rental assistance, I've asked our chief to, again, just share those resources. The more I'm, I, we're hearing about concerns for rental assistance, housing relocation, legal assistance in terms of their housing situation, we're realizing that there's still a gap between the need and what, or, I'm sorry, what we have and kind of awareness of what we have, so everything we can do, if we can keep amplifying information about those services in, in multiple languages, that's really going to help, and I appreciate staff providing flyers too. I'm going to start carrying them with me everywhere I go, and if we can use our, our community organizations to broaden outreach on that. And then I just want to also ask every individual in our community, really think about the, especially our, our seniors who might be isolated in your community, but really anyone in your community who might be in need, please do reach out to them. Know that our city provides, our city and our partners of, of community organizations across the city provide a lot of services to help a lot of people in need, and there are a lot of people in need, so, so please do take the time to reach out to somebody and see if there's any way you can help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to District 4 with Councilmember Manuel Chavez. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. It's nice to be back in chambers after a month off. I know I miss being here. So, I have three thank-yous and one invitation, so I'll begin with thank-yous. First of all, thank you much for Coast to Alliance for Better Streets, CMABs for short. I was lucky enough to have joined them on their bright lights distribution on Bristol, and that was very, very enlightening to me. I also know they were in, in my district, both on Placentia and 19th Street, and Harbor and Victoria. One thing, speaking with the folks who are volunteering, they shared was just the amount of surprise, surpriseness, shock, they felt when they realized how many people were biking down 19th Street. I've always had this in my district, folks that bike typically bike because they don't have means to other modes of transportation. It's not really a, a lifestyle thing, but it's more like a necessity sometimes, and Placentia is one of the most highly biked streets in our city, I'd probably wager a bet, which is why I keep reiterating to staff that I want to see us have some sort of protected bike lane around that corridor. Not only because it'd be safe for the bicyclists, but it's also a great way to encourage folks who live in West Coast Mesa to bike to Fairview Park, bike to, to High School, and potentially even bike down to the Back Bay and Banning Ranch, which is fine and developed, so just one more reason why we should be supporting that, that bike path. Number two, I want to thank our city staff for doing a great job with the cooling centers this last weekend. I spoke with, with our, our chief, Stefano, about the attendance, and we noticed that there was an uptick as the weekend went on. It's not something we're used to doing in Costa Mesa, I think it's only the second time we've done this, but just showcasing to our residents that they need a cool place to be during the weekend, that we're there, is important to me. I, I don't live in an AC unit, and most of my folks in my district don't have ACs. It was an incredibly tough weekend. I know I walked and ate coffee twice that weekend, and only a block from where I live, and I was drenched in sweat, was coming back from a quick 10-minute walk. One thing I'll note, again, trees are important, trees give shade. The shade was very crucial on Pomona Avenue, and I was walking back from knee coffee, so just want to reiterate again, any place we can plant trees, that don't have trees, let's do it, because I guarantee you, there will be a difference, and as this, this climate change occurs more often, and we have more extreme temperatures, every small bit, thing we can do to help, does help. And again, I want to thank city staff, and really, really importantly, three community activists in Christian, Eric, and Lambert for helping host in Shalimar, the Back to School Fresh event. This occurred two weeks ago, the weekend before school began. We were joined by a couple of great organizations. CMABs was there, giving out bright lights, we had free backpacks from, from a generous donor, we had SoCito out there, giving out pomade and giving out hand sanitizer, we had OC Barber's Poller giving free hickory kids, we had Roman's Party Rentals giving us a free jumper. It was an incredible event, just to see the community activated and see the community feel invested in. I, I, I will, I will share with you, that was probably the most impactful day I've had on council, is seeing the community be led by the community itself to create such an amazing event. And it just goes to show that the more you invest in the community, the more you invest the youth, and give them the chance to shine, they will. So again, thank you city staff for the amazing work you did that weekend. And finally, the invitation. As you may know, our great chief, Chief Ron Lawrence has been touring Costa Mesa, unlistening tours, and District 4 is up tomorrow, at Shalimar Park, once more. It's going to be outdoors, so please bring a lawn chair, please bring some water, but more importantly, it's a chance for us and the community to really talk to our police chief, see what, what's going on in the department, and raise concerns or questions we have to our chief. So please come on by, 6:00 p.m., Shalimar Park tomorrow. And on that, guys, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Next up from District 2 is Councilmember Lauren Gamarros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a couple of things I want to address. The first thing is, Claudia, you, you were speaking in regards to Master Circle, and I just want to say that I'm here for all the constituents regarding Master Circle. If anybody wants to reach out to me, you can always reach me, you can call the constituent services here in Costa Mesa, they will plug you right into me, I will be glad to call you back. I'm going to be transparent in anything that I do, so if you want to reach out to me, please don't hesitate. In regards to some current events, recently, we had some things that kind of changed within the staffing level, and I just want to personally thank Chief Stefano for stepping up here and making the wheel keep rolling along here. If it wasn't for him, we probably would have had a couple of bumps in the road. And I also want to personally thank all the directors on our staff, Brenda Green, Jennifer Lee, Rajah Setharaman, Carol Molina, Jason Minter, Steve Eli, thank you very much. I know you guys have been burning the candle at both ends, I know it's been really tough. Our constituent services team has been there for us, Evis, Alma, Janet, I want to thank you, and I also want to thank Tony Dodaro for being there anytime we have something we need, he's always there to answer questions and help us out, so that's basically, basically all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Now our Mayor Pro Tem from District 3, Andrea Marr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a great time volunteering at the CMAB's lighting event as well. It is sort of shocking to stand on Bristol and see people coming from the hotels trying to eat dinner at the camp in the lab, and so we've talked about wayfinding signage and other things. I hadn't really thought through the fact that like, that is a major corridor for tourism traffic to go check out what's happening at the camp in the lab amongst other, and one of the women we talked to actually said, like, Randall's where all the breweries are, right? So, you know, it's got a reputation, we need to make sure we're being clear about where to go, not to mention, it's a kind of a narrow sidewalk and a very busy street, so, not, something I'm sure you know already, Rajah. While we're talking, I noticed on 19th, there's some funny-looking trashcans, and I was just wondering if you could maybe tell the community about those.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Pro Tem Marr. Those trashcans that you see are called Big Belly Trashcans, and those have compactors built in, and those are solar-powered. So, we got many of them, actually about four of them with recycle and trash, and they were funded by a grant, through, through Bavera Recycling Grant. So, we installed a total of eight of them along 19th Street, and we hope to install more in the future.
Very good. So I've been unreasonably excited about having trashcans like this. The, part of the, the point of having the compacting at the trashcan is that you don't have to drive a vehicle around quite as often to pick up the trash, so you can actually see a reduction in net carbon emissions by not having to go to every single trashcan a couple times a day. I'd love to see them in Teewinkle, because I swear, that's all we do, is take out the trash at Teewinkle, like, every weekend, there's just piles and bags of trash, so, but I'm, I'm excited about trashcans, so come talk to me about that if you're interested. I've already, I've also asked for us, and I think I'll let, I've just started thinking of you as chief manager in my head, but, you know, I'll let the chief talk about sort of the strategic plan update, but I've been hearing a lot of concerns about some of our planning things that are coming up, I've talked to Ms. Lee about this, but short-term rentals, ADUs, inclusionary housing ordinance, and then I think most importantly, the outdoor dining use permits that are all set to expire at the end of the year. I know I'm getting lots and lots of questions from the business community about how we're going to extend those, or if we're going to do any kind of a grandfathering, so I'd love to get an update on kind of all of our council priorities, but those in particular. Art Venture is next Friday, September 16th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. This event is dear to my heart, I was the chair of the Cultural Arts Committee for a period of time when we first started doing Art Venture. It's at the Sagerstrom Center for the Arts, it's free, it's all of the local artists in the community come out and show their work, it's a great night, and I hope you are all there. The League of Cities starts tomorrow, I'm the delegate for council, so I'll be in Long Beach with, I think maybe also the chief, and a couple of others, you know, learning from what other cities are doing. Our friends who left us, Justin Martin is now Our friends who left us, Justin Martin is now in Laguna Niguel, is actually getting an award for some of the work that he's done down there. So it'll be good to connect with other cities and understand what other city councils are working on. And then, last but not least, actually, kind of mirroring Councilmember Reynolds' comment about helicopters, I've seen a number of comments about drones. And I think about six months ago, I stopped someone in Teewinkle who was flying a drone around and kind of asked what they were doing and if they were allowed to be doing it. And he produced just like a ream of paperwork from the airport authority, from a bunch of other people, and said, no, no, I'm allowed to be here. I have all the permits. I'm not familiar with what all those look like. I know, Ms. Reyes, at one point, we started looking into it together, but seeing all these comments about people concerned drones are snooping in their backyard, or if their kids' windows, or whatever, I want to understand, A, our policy, and then, B, I'm assuming we tell those folks to call the non-emergency line if they feel creeped out by a drone, but I'll get with you, cheese nodding, so I think that's right. But I'd like to better understand what our policy, what our stance, and maybe what our education process is related to drones. And that was all I had. Thank you.
All right. Good content. Great. Okay, so just kind of moving around to different things. Some of these things have been mentioned, but the streetlight started on Baker and Randolph after kind of a long wait for Edison. I think it's really a great improvement, and it kind of ties up the improvements that we've had there, which I think are spectacular for a very exciting part of the city. So thank you to Public Works and eventually Edison for turning that on. The Festival of Children, as I said earlier, was a really fun event. It was nice to be able to provide a certificate to Sandy Sagras from Daniels at that event, and there were several members of staff that were there. Chief Lawrence was there, Chief Stefano. That's my entourage. Alma Reyes was there, and then the district council member for our District Two, that area, Lauren Gamarros. We did a really fun event the other day. We dedicated and cut the ribbons for these instruments at Donald Dungen Library, right at the Lions Park Playground. It was, it was really, it's really a fun little attraction there. I encourage everybody to go, whether, you know, children of all ages, basically. People that are pretty old were banging on the instruments, and little kids will enjoy it, too. So Councilmember Chavez was there. It's in Councilmember Reynolds' district, and she said a few words at the ribbon cutting. Councilmember Gamarros was there, and thank you to Katrina Foley and a resident named Richard Alexander, who donated a good amount of the money for those instruments, and of course, the friends of the library who organized and inspired that whole plan. As Councilmember Chavez said, we have our listening tour with the chief. We've had four of those. There are two left. Tomorrow night at 6:00, it's at Shalimar. On the 21st of September at 6:00, we're having our final listening tour in District Five, and that's at the Senior Center. No matter what district you're in, you can go to these, and if you haven't been yet, you should, because we want to hear from you, but also, the chief provides some very valuable insight into what's going on in our police department. And it's just very, it's very interesting. I don't think you want to miss it. Thank you again. Everybody's mentioned, and I concur, the CMAB, Costa Mesa Alliance for, CMAB, is that right? CMAPS, Alliance for Better Streets. The bright lights giveaway was terrific. I wish I could have got out there. I was gone most of the time in Chicago, I think, during that time, but I saw it all on Facebook. You guys went really viral with it, and it was, it's terrific. And it's not just that project. It's everything that this organization does to elevate the interest and the needs of being, having safer streets for bikes and for pedestrians and for cars, for that matter. So for everything you do, thank you very much. Let's see if I'm missing anything. Oh, you know, nobody's mentioned that Susan Price has retired since our last meeting, and so I want to recognize her great work for the city. Susan Price came over from the county. She was our Assistant City Manager. She was very instrumental in the work at the temporary shelter and then opening up the permanent shelter that we have, our bridge shelter over on Airway, acquiring the funding, helping to run the shelter, and then so many other things she did as our city manager. We were very fortunate to have her at our city at a perfect time for her to be at the greatest value to our city. Her legacy and the work that she did will live on for years and years and years, if not generations, in the work that she did to build the foundation at the bridge shelter. So let's give a round of applause to Susan Price. So finally, I just want to, I'm going to adjourn the meeting for Salvador Avila. And, you know, many of you know, Avila's restaurant is on Placentia. I think it was the second or the third restaurant with the Avila family. I think they started over near Los Angeles, I want to say Highland Park or something like that. But Salvador Avila was born in Michoacana, Mexico. He's the patriarch and founder of Avila's El Ranchito Restaurant Empire. He passed away from natural causes at the ripe age of 99, on July 28th, in his Corona del mar home. A news release of Avila's El Ranch, by Avila's El Ranchito stated that "He led his life with determination, humility, gratitude, and self-sacrifice. He recognized that his blessings came from heaven above." Salvador Avila is survived by six children, Jose Luis, Salvador, Victor, Sergio, Maria Elena, whom most of us know. She operates the restaurant over on Placentia, and Margarita, and 14 grandchildren, and 19 great-grandchildren. So may he rest in peace, and we're going to adjourn the meeting in his honor and memory. So let's move on with the city manager report. Acting chief, sorry, acting city manager, Stefano, you have the floor.
Well, thank you, Mayor Stevens, and members of the council. I've got a few things tonight, but I want to just pick up on what a number of you had said and share the gratitude on behalf of Loriann and on behalf of all of us. But coming off Labor Day weekend, the appreciation for what labor is and what it means to the workforce and to the city of Costa Mesa, and this council has emphasized that as a priority, and has put a lot of time and effort into it. So I just want to say thank you. It's appreciated, and it's an important piece. Our greatest resource is our workforce, and that allows us to serve the community at the highest possible level. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. It means a lot, and your actions speak quite loudly to that. In terms of Loriann, we're looking forward to her return. She's been doing some exhaustive rehabilitation. She had a significant leg injury, and I know that discussion comes up quite a bit. I'm glad you acknowledged Susan Price for the great work that she's done. They were a great team together, quite honestly. But Loriann is excited to come back, and I spoke with her just a bit before the council meeting, and we anticipate her to start the transition back next week. She's excited to get back to work, as far as that goes. Listening tours. So it's been mentioned, but I just want to, I've got to emphasize a huge shout-out to Chief Lawrence, just an incredible individual, incredible leader, and I think the listening tours are a powerful tool, communication in terms of what the police department does and continues to do out in the community. We've got the best, and we're fortunate to have the best, and the fact, and opportunity to have the mayor out there and each council member as we move through the districts, that's an important piece. But outstanding job, Chief Lawrence, and an outstanding partner. The last two listening tours, as was stated, are tomorrow, September 7th, in District Four, at Shalimar Park, and September 21st, in District Five, at the Senior Center. Jumping into addressing homelessness, and no one has done more, or does it, is doing it better, and we say that humbly, but Costa Mesa's efforts to address homelessness continue to be a success, success. As of August 2022, 238 people have been housed, 10 more than the month prior. Related to that, we continue to get requests from the community about housing assistance. We currently have two active rental assistance programs. For those households without minor children, please contact the Mercy House, 714-836-7188. And for those households that have minor children, please contact Families Forward, and that's area code 949-552-2727. Interested parties should reach out to the providers directly. Flyers for those programs can be found at our city website, under Hot Topics, and in the city lobby, the lobby of City Hall. Another important item out there are commissions and committees. There is still time for interested residents to apply for either the newly-formed Arts Commission, the Animal Services Committee, the Active Transportation Committee, the Fairview Park Steering Committee, the Historical Preservation Committee, or the Mobile Home Park Advisory Committee. Residents who are interested in getting involved in local government are encouraged to complete a commission committee application form from the city clerk's office or from the city website. And we would be remiss if we didn't emphasize the state of the city is coming, fast approaching. Wanted to make sure that everyone knows that the Chamber of Commerce is hosting its annual State of the City luncheon, featuring our very own Mayor Stevens on Friday, September 23rd, at the Costa Mesa Hilton, from 11:00 AM to 1:30. It's going to be something that no one wants to miss, and registration is now open on the chamber's website. Additionally, wanted to make sure everyone's aware, we have a lot of fires that are going throughout the state right now. We had resources deployed from Costa Mesa as part of the regional resources. We initially responded as part of a pre-positioning resource, ready to respond. Those resources were down at the border fire that, as it states, you know, as it says, is it was down near Mexico. They were brought back recently, and now they've deployed to the mountain fire, which is up north near Weed, California. We have a couple of other major fires that are going on right now. We have Orange County resources out at those, including the Radford Fire out at Big Bear. But we're continuing to monitor and watch those. And this Sunday, we'll have our 9/11 observance at all Costa Mesa Fire and Rescue Fire stations, along and in concert with our Brothers and Sisters in Blue and our city council and city staff. And that's at 9:00 at all the fire stations, just a day of remembrance, a very low-key and opportunity to get together. And with that, I'm going to close out. Thank you to Division Chief Jason Pyle, who has stepped up as our acting fire chief. I appreciate the efforts that he's done to step up, including our entire command staff. Very grateful for that. And Alma Reyes, who's been a great resource, as well as we've had with all of the staff, all the department directors. And as I started the comments tonight, it's from the boots-on-the-ground through all of our, all of our team, our staff, our division managers, our department directors, all the way through the city manager's office, constituent services, and it ultimately ends at the top and with our city council. So again, I think we've hit everything. And I'm going to close out by bringing up Brenda Emrick, our Acting Emergency Services Manager, for a brief overview of what we have going on with emergency management, a brief update, and a couple of other items. And with that, Brenda, we're so fortunate to have you, and on behalf of Chief Lawrence and I, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I do like chief manager. Sounds really good. All right. So on behalf of Chief Lawrence and Chief Stefano, I'd like to give you just a brief update from the Office of Emergency Management. First and foremost, our local hazard mitigation plan is ready to go out to public review. We'll be releasing it next Monday. So excited about getting that off the ground and letting the community take a look and really see where we're going in the next five years. This is a five-year hazard mitigation plan that will take us into our safety element of our emergency operations plan as well. So look for that to come out next week. From a public health standpoint, we have a number of things that we're talking about through COVID. We've had tracking on that. We still have 202 people in the hospital in Orange County, so we continue to have conditions where COVID is around. We're also tracking on the heat. There was just an energy emergency alert through 8:00 PM this evening, a significant change in just a ISO rating that came down from the county. So with the opportunity of opening the cooling centers with our Parks and Community Services and our volunteers over the weekend, we had a chance to do that. And creatively, we have been collecting pet crates and information and help for pets that were, may show up at a local center, and we were actually able to deploy those resources, but our dogs didn't show up, and I think everyone was a little disappointed in not having the dogs there. But we do have those resources. On top of everything that you've talked about today with the families and children and the connection to that, this also starts National Preparedness Month, and this year's theme is called "A Lasting Legacy," and that's a life that you build is worth protecting. And so preparing for disasters to create a lasting legacy for you and your family is really this year's theme. So we'll be pushing out activities throughout the community and through our website and getting people involved in being better prepared. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you for the extended time tonight.
Yeah. No, it's great. And you've done a wonderful job, chief manager, whatever we want to call you. Let's give it up for the chief. All right. And then, before we start jumping into the agenda here, let's hear from Kimberly Barlow. What do you got?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just have a very brief report tonight. I do want to remind the council that from our earlier victory at trial in the Ohio House versus the City of Costa Mesa matter, there was a hearing concerning one remaining legal issue, and judgment was entered in the city's favor today. So that matter is concluded unless and until there is an appeal, but we have once again successfully defended our group home code provisions. So obviously, it couldn't have happened without the wonderful help of Ms. Lee, who was there every day, all day, and simultaneously doing her other job. But I'm very happy for that outcome, and that's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you. So now we'll move on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar's routine, and it will be acted upon in one motion, and there will be no separate discussion of the consent calendar unless somebody from the council or the public or the staff pulls an item. I want to note my recusal on number three, because I have a contribution by one of the warrant recipients that makes me have to recuse. And then I also want to pull number nine. So I don't know, Madam Clerk, if anybody else wants to pull anything from the consent calendar?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reynolds and a member of the public has requested pull consent item 10.
10? Okay, nine or 10? So we're going to pull nine or 10. So can we get a motion, please, on the balance? Motion by Councilmember Reynolds, second by Councilmember Gamarros. Let's call for the question.
Mayor, please.
Oh, sorry. I've got to do it. Sorry.
Motion carries 7-0.
Excellent. Great. Okay.
With Councilmember Stevens abstaining on item number three.
Yes, right.
I mean, Mayor Stevens.
On three, right. Okay. Noted. So let's move on to consent calendar item number nine.
Thank you. This is approval to hire full-time custody staff for Costa Mesa Police Jail Operations Services.
So I pulled this item just to, so we could make sure we kind of aired some of the critical points to the public. The chief and I talked about this. He knew I was going to pull it. Do you want to say a few words, or do you want me to put you on, do we start examining you? Just kidding. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Well, we have a, I think we have a PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully, we can pull it up. What do I have? Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Chief Ron Lawrence, the police department. I'm here accompanied by David Casares. He's one of our lieutenants and has been in charge of jail services for Costa Mesa. Let's see if I can get this to work. There we go. So a type-one jail for our city is essential. It allows our officers to effectively and efficiently book people we arrest into our city jail and frees them up for emergency calls for service. Booking an arrestee and transporting them to the Orange County Main Jail can take between two and six hours, or longer if a hospital clearance is required. So this, if our police officers were handling this booking and transportation to the main jail in Orange County, it would take our police officers off the street for an untimely manner and really diminish services to our patrol. for an untimely manner and really diminish services to our patrol. We book a monthly average of about 400 arrests into our city jail, a combination of misdemeanor and felony arrests, and they are either issued a citation or released, or they're transported to the jail by our jail staff, freeing up our police officers. The city used to employ its own jail staff until professional services agreement with a company called G4S for jail services was contracted in 2013. G4S was eventually acquired by Allied Universal in March of 2022. But something that's important to point out is even though we had a contract for jail services, the operational oversight, the management, the accountability to the California Board of State and Community Corrections all remained a police department function overseen by a police captain and Lieutenant Cusaris. So really, the contract was a workforce recruitment and payroll mechanism, more than anything else. During March of 2022, there was a significant decline in contractual jail services, namely, we were losing staff. They were quitting. And in our exit interviews with them, we came to find out the chief reason was they were not getting paid. So we went all the way down to two jailers. And I was forced to either close the jail or come to City Council, which we did in May of 2022, and ask that you discontinue the contract with Allied Universal, which you did. I also asked you to authorize the city manager to negotiate an agreement to hire temporary staff to staff our jail. And I'm pleased to say, we had two full-time park rangers who had been jail-trained. We were able to transfer them to the jail. And we were able to recruit and attract back six part-time jail staff who are currently hired. And before I turn it over to Lieutenant Cusaris to present our recommendations and the funding, this really is an issue less about a contract versus non-contract, and it's more of an issue of, do we have a jail or do we not have a jail? Because there are no other contractors out there other than Allied Universal, who is not working for us or meeting our needs, that do this service. So with that, I'll invite Lieutenant Cusaris.
Thank you, Chief. City Council, staff recommends that city hire 11 new positions. One would be a supervisor for the jail, along with 10 custody officer positions as full-time city employees. The staffing level has proven successful in the past as our previous staffing and also the Board of State and Community Corrections, who oversees and does their quality inspections, state that it's safe for our 24/7 operation in the jail. The annual cost for jail custody staff is $1.12 million. The fiscal year 2223 budget that we have for our jail services is $945,000 approximately. An appropriation of $175,000 approximately is needed to facilitate jail operations. Thank you, sir. So staff recommends City Council, one, authorize the city manager or designee to increase the city table of organization to account for 11 full-time custody staff for jail operations. Adopt a resolution for the compensation plan and salary schedule to establish the custody supervisor classification and authorize the appropriation of $175,215 from the general fund, Account 101's fund balance, for police department custody staff to facilitate Costa Mesa jail operations. Thank you for your time, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, good. From my perspective, I think you covered all the points that I wanted to cover, so I don't have any questions. Does any other council members, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes, thank you for that report. I was hoping you could share a little bit, because I think a lot of our residents are surprised to find out we have a jail. So if you could share, I know you showed the number, 400 arrestees per month, 13 a day or so. What kinds of infractions are people being arrested for who are going through our jail?
It's a variety. And if we take the last seven months of 2022, from January to July, we've actually booked 2,900 with an average of 414 bookings per month. So that includes felonies and misdemeanors, which can be someone who violates a Costa Mesa municipal code or a penal code, which happens to be a misdemeanor and not a felony. It could also be for other people who have outstanding warrants that have to be taken into custody and DUIs.
DUIs, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Do you have a question?
Yeah, just curious.
Sure, go ahead. Councilmember Harper?
Councilmember Reynolds was asking a question. She was looking for the, I think she was looking for that, and I am. Looking for kind of like, how many misdemeanors, how many felonies? Is it, when I get arrested for a misdemeanor, do I have to come down to the jail? Or do I just, do you just write a ticket?
Not necessarily. It depends on the type of misdemeanor. It can be cited and released in the field. But if it's a misdemeanor that needs to come in, something that's an assault and battery, and we have a misdemeanor assault and battery, which is a violent crime, we would bring that person to the jail. A DUI would be brought to the jail. And as we go through our agreements or the way we handle these situations, they can be released on a written promise to appear, to show up in court for their court date once either they sober up, have a ride home for a DUI, or if it's someone who's committed a violent crime, they can be let go or they can be processed by going to OCJ, Orange County Jail.
Okay, last question. The difference in the budget, is it number of staff people you're staffing or cost per staff member? In other words, Allied Universal had a certain number of people they allocated, I'm sure, and were allocating 11. How many do they have, and what's the difference?
Yeah, yes, sir. For Allied Universal, we had 11. That was the same model that we're using now, 10 plus one. 10 custody officers, one supervisor. And so now looking at continuing this with our employees.
One thing on that point that's important to point out is the contract that we got out of with Allied Universal was set to expire. So we would have been negotiating with them for future costs.
Might have gone up, yeah. It should have gone up, probably for them to make it work. I understand. I was just curious, if you'd found a better way to do it, or there are people just weren't even showing up. It just sounds like the case, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Any other council members with any questions? Okay, let's open it up for any public comment. Any public comment on this item? Taboda, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. First of all, I don't think this should have been a consent item. I think this should have been a full-blown agenda item. Staff's talking about hiring 11 new hires. That is something that I don't believe belongs on an agenda or a consent. It merits more, more review than that. I'm very supportive of city staff. I'm very supportive of labor. I'm very supportive of police. This is not anti-police, anti-labor, anti-city staff. But I'm a finance guy. And I'm looking for what's, what's the cost? What's the additional cost that the city was incurring with G4S versus what's the cost of hiring 11 city employees? It's going to be higher than G4S, that's for sure, but how much higher? Unfortunately, I find that the staff report really doesn't address those issues. It talks about a cost of $1,001,002, which looks like the addition of the 945, which is the G4S contract, plus the 175. That's the $1,001,200 number. And it talks about what the cost was prior, you know, in 2012, 2013, which was $1,003, but that doesn't impact the current cost. So I think what I'm asking for is more information should be provided to council before you make these decisions. These are big decisions. As one current council member said a number of years ago, and I'm paraphrasing, once you hire an individual, the city has an obligation, financial obligation, to that employee for the rest of the employee's life. So these are big decisions. These are big financial decisions. And that's why I don't think this belonged on the consent calendar. But I would ask the staff forecast out, what's the cost of this, these 11 employees for the next five years? What's the cost that would have been if they continue? Let's say the city continued with a G4S-type contract or another subcontract similar. So how much additional cost is this going to cost the city? I think you should know that before you make this decision. I think the people should know that before you make this decision. To me, that's a reasonable request. In fact, quite frankly, I'm going to, I'm going to request something like that in next week's Fight PAC meeting. When employees are proposed, new hires are proposed, then I think there needs to be a more diligent financial analysis so you guys can make the most informed decisions available to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers wish to speak for this matter? Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, closed public comment. I'll make a motion to approve. I don't know if there's a second. Second by Gamaros. Okay, so thank you for your comment, Mr. Taboda. Thank you for your presentation, Lieutenant Cesares and Chief. What we have here is a situation where, back in 2013, we took an essential city service, which was our jail, and contracted it out to G4. You know, everything went okay, I suppose, under the supervision of our police department. And there were some savings until G4 was acquired by Allied, and Allied basically defaulted on their obligation to pay the employees, and the employees, not surprisingly, quit. And then we basically couldn't run our jail. I think the jail is an important city function. This vote today is really binary. Do we want a jail or we do not want a jail? There's no option to have a jail with a contract service. G4 and Allied, as was pointed out in the presentation, was the sole, was the only company that responded to the last RFP. So we're choosing jail or not jail. There, yes, we're hiring employees, but I think that this is an appropriate, it's an appropriate service and should have always been a service that was delivered by our employees as opposed to contractors. Because to go with contractors, you need central public service functions, creates a vulnerability, particularly when there's only one contractor that you can go with. And that vulnerability came to roost, and we couldn't, we didn't have a jail for a period of time. Without a jail, we have issues with response times. We have issues with coverage. We have issues with public safety and our police department in general, being able to serve our community. The last thing we want to do is do anything in terms of our voting that's corrosive of our primary goal, which is public safety. There's not a cheaper option, and there's not a better option. This is an easy decision. Whether it was on the consent calendar or not on the consent calendar, we pulled it. It's a simple, it's a simple decision, but perhaps we could have had it as new business. That's just procedural. We pulled it. It's important, I think, and it's important because it reflects some basic principles. Principles of prioritizing public safety, prioritizing having our employees deliver the essential services to the community. So that's the reason for my motion. Councilmember Gamaros, do you have anything to say in support of your second?
No, we're good.
Okay, does anybody else have anything to say? No? Call for the question.
Councilmember Harper, please. Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go to consent calendar item number 10. Okay, we got to read the title.
This is acceptance and allocation of the 2022-23 Office of Traffic Safety Grant for the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program. And this item was pulled by Councilmember Reynolds and a member of the public.
Okay. Julia, you want to take the floor? Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes, thank you. So I pulled this for two reasons. One, I really wanted to highlight a piece of the program here as meeting what I see as one of the most important needs on our streets. And then to also ask about an opportunity related to the bicycle and pedestrian safety enforcement operations. So I wanted to highlight that this, this grant that we're receiving from the Office of Transportation Safety, as part of it, we're planning to conduct 17 special traffic enforcement operations targeting red light running, excessive speed, and other violations by drivers at or near intersections. We're also planning to conduct three special enforcement operations targeting distracted driving violations. So zero complaints about that. I really want to see that done. We learned through our local road safety program studies that our transportation team has done and other studies that we've done related to kind of collision data analysis that reckless driving in our city is the number-one safety issue on our roads. So these enforcement actions targeting that reckless driving are so important. So I really appreciate the team for pulling that out. The grant also includes a couple bicycle and pedestrian safety enforcement operations. And I recall that we've done some creative operations in the past. Related to some of the comments we heard earlier with the CMAB's bright lights distribution, I was wondering if there was an opportunity actually to have these two programs work together. So one of the, a couple conversations I had during the bright lights distributions were with bicyclists coming down the street, no lights on their bikes. So of course, we waved them down, said, "Let's get, let's get lights on your bikes." And two of them said that they had, in the past, been pulled over for not having lights, you know, gotten a warning or a ticket. And, and so a few of us were talking, saying, "What an incredible opportunity. Now we have lots of, you know, Costa Mesa branded lights. Could we, through some of these actions with our police department, when they're seeing, you know, what is a code violation, but really a safety issue for the people on those bikes, could we actually distribute those lights through our officers?" And so I had the chance, very briefly, to speak with Captain Lapointe, who I think said that something like that could work. And so I wanted to ask, through this program and through these two enforcement operations, if we could try that out. Is that feasible?
With the grant specifically, OTS, the Office of Traffic Safety, is looking for enforcement, targeted enforcement, specifically for bicycle and pedestrian violations that are hazardous. In the case of the bright lights issue, I believe that they were passing out lights to subjects and requested that the police department would give lights to individuals stopped for bicycle light violations in lieu of citations. So in the purpose of the grant, that would be contrary. The grant is looking for enforcement specifically. But outside of the grant, that is absolutely one thing that we could do, passing out lights to subjects riding bicycles, having light violations. Patrol officers not under the grant.
So is my understanding, based on what you said, is that we, it would be in conflict with the grant to pass out lights as part of these two operations?
That's correct, ma'am. The, the grant specifically targets hazardous violations for bicyclists and pedestrians. The target is to educate the public through enforcement. That's the goals of the Office of Traffic Safety. So giving lights in lieu of a citation would be contrary to the Office of Traffic Safety's mission and their, their direction.
How about in addition to?
In addition to, it's something we could definitely do outside of the grant. The grant, for the next period, there are two campaigns. That entails probably four days of enforcement. The remaining 361 days, we can 100%. The Traffic Safety Bureau can work to pass out lights that we have to individuals on bicycles.
Okay, I'm really, I'm really surprised by that. Actually, I thought this was to be a wonderful opportunity for collaboration and really helping our residents, right, who are in a known safety situation. So if this is an OTS issue, I'll be asking who I should be contacting at OTS. Because in my mind, when we're having an interaction with a resident who's, you know, in a safety situation, not having lights on their bikes, if we have in a safety situation, not having lights on their bikes, if we have the opportunity to hand out lights, we should be doing that. So, is that correct, that this is in conflict with the OTS grant? I do, I'm surprised that I have a problem with that.
Again, the direction of the Office of Traffic Safety is to educate through enforcement, and that's what the funds are specifically allocated for. I could put you in contact with our OTS coordinator if she has an opinion that's contrary. I don't know what she would say, however, I do believe that the mission of, or the objectives of OTS is to educate through enforcement.
Okay. Well, I'll be having a few conversations about this. I see the chief leaning forward. I hope that in all of our interactions with our residents, we're looking for opportunities to not just cite, but also to educate and support for making the changes that are going to make people safer on our streets. So, if, I know that I've seen OTS grants supporting lots of education and engagement operations as well. So, I hope we're pursuing those types of grants in the future. I see the chief here coming to share some insight, but I think it's important that we have opportunities to take those positive actions.
Councilmember Reynolds, to be, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
The truth is, you're both right. OTS, the funds are for enforcement activities, but absolutely, we educate, and that's their primary mission for us, is to get people to be safe. And so handing out lights and doing that education as in collaboration with the grant is something we absolutely will do. And it's just the sergeant speaking about the specifics of the grant and the funding of those officers or enforcement, but that's not to say that both can't happen.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I hope whether it's outside the grant or not, we can start the work of carrying those lights out and helping get those lights into the community. Again, it's, every next cyclist who has lights on their bike is safer. And the overall goals, I know of this grant, was to reduce injuries and deaths in our cities. So I hope we can take those actions and, give me the number of that OTS person. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam.
Yeah, sorry, that was a really good discussion. So, if I'm reading the grant agreement correctly, then like $5,000 out of the $265,000 is for enforcement for pedestrian and bicycles, right? It's like a teeny percentage.
Correct.
Okay, got it. So, I just, because there's, I mean, there's a lot of educational stuff included in here that I just want to make sure the public's aware of, that we are, you know, participating in National Walk to School Day and developing, sending law enforcement personnel to standardized field sobriety testing, training, and other things. So, you know, it's a tiny portion of overall what we're trying to accomplish here. But I think it's a good discussion, and yeah, I think, I don't know what enforcement looks like exactly in terms of how many folks we're writing tickets to for being unsafe pedestrians, but I think that's a conversation worth having, so I'm glad you brought it up, Councilmember Reynolds.
Okay, good. Any other questions from council? No, I don't see any. So let's open it up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Mark, you have the floor.
Thank you, City Council. First, I just want to appreciate all the wonderful CMAB's comments today, so thank you for that. I guess I just want to, like, speak on just the last, like, few minutes of discourse. I don't know, from just like a general member of the public, someone who's not in the bureaucracy, someone who's not a lawyer, it sounds like a little unhinged, honestly, that our Office of Traffic Safety wouldn't let us do, like, additional traffic safety stuff. So I'm going to say in just broad strokes that the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets would be happy to supply anyone with the thousands of additional bike lights that we have from the grant, and that we're allowed to do that, just to be clear, from the SCAG grant. We would also be happy to hand out our QR codes that we have on little door hangers that show where you can legally park bicycles in Costa Mesa, because there's a lot of places you can't legally park bicycles in Costa Mesa. So, if there's ever that sort of enforcement. And I guess the last thing I'll just say is just to read some of the things that I quickly looked in the grant agreement, which is, you know, "Best practice strategies will be conducted to reduce the number of persons killed and injured in crashes involving alcohol and other primary crash factors." Yeah, funded may include impaired driving enforcement, enforcement on primary crash factors, distracted driving, nighttime seatbelt enforcement, special enforcement and operations, including yada, 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 high number of bicycle and pedestrian crashes, and educational programs. These strategies are designed to earn media attention, thus enhancing the overall deterrent effect, the traffic safety deterrent effect. There's also stuff on pedestrian bicycles in here. And there's also acknowledgement that within the goals of the program is to reduce the number of persons killed, reduce the number of persons injured, reduce the number of pedestrians injured, reduce the number of bicycles killed, reduce the number of bicyclists injured in traffic crashes. So I'm just like, as a member of the public, lost in the sauce about like how we couldn't hand out bike lights at this. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Humphrey, you have the floor.
Good evening again, council. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. First, I want to state that I am for your acceptance of this item. But, one of the things that happens is this grant description says that it's for best practices, strategies. And one of those strategies, to me, is planning for future problems that are going to be affecting exactly what the purpose of this grant is, is to teach through enforcement processes and to keep our streets safe. With an increase in population, if you don't plan for those things, how do you effectively plan to do the strategies that get you done with the thing? Measure K was approved by this council the last meeting, and all of you made comments, well, all but Mr. Harper, pardon me, but all of you made comments that it was to meet the RINA requirements as a major part of that. Well, that means that you're going to have a significant increase in population, and that population increase is going to find itself on the major corridors, Harbor and Newport Boulevard. And if they have the same problems that we have now with the public that need enforcement, that need education, we're going to have that exact same problem, but magnified, and on our major corridors, Harbor and Newport. So, with Measure K being approved, you're going to now find that you're going to have to meet your goals of reaching the RINA number, that path, you are going to, in fact, have more people on Harbor and Newport, you're going to have more enforcement needs, and a best practices for that is to be able to start planning today, because eight years is not a long time away. So if you're going to plan for today, one of the best practices should be planning on what you're going to do with the future increases in population. And note that you're going to have, to meet that RINA number, by your rules as they stand right this minute, you're going to have to have a significant increase in population. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Ms. McDonald.
Good evening again. So, the requirement that you have a white light that is visible for a distance of 300 feet from the side, front and side of your bicycle is the vehicle code. It's not the Office of Transportation Safety making up this funny rule. It's, you know, it's there, they're enforcing that. Now, we also, in our city, have a funny little thing in our municipal code that says you got to get a bike license. You're not supposed to be riding your bike in the city without one. Hopefully, we can get rid of some of these archaic ordinances, but if we're going to be requiring bike licenses, at the time you put the sticker on the frame of the bike, the police officer does that, they should hand you a bike light to put on your bike at that time. When we are going out to the schools and doing bike rodeos and doing safety programs at the schools, make sure everybody's got a light on their bike. You know, it's as simple as that. Yeah, why, wouldn't it be nice if under Measure K, we were requiring bike lanes? What can I say? Missed opportunity.
All right. Oh, there's somebody else? Oh, yeah, Mr. Devota, you have the floor, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say thank you. I'm a member of the CMAB's board, and thank you for the good words on CMABs. And I also want to thank the police department for being very receptive to handing out bike lights. I appreciate their response. That's community policing, I guess, at its basic. Also, I made the comment, and Councilwoman Reynolds mentioned it too, I was handing out lights, and I think a good exercise for council, we'll see if it happens, but once a quarter, stand on an intersection, pick an intersection in the city and stand there for an hour, and just people watch and watch what goes on. Cars, people, pedestrians, bicycles, whatever. It's very interesting. It's an education. I did it, I had, I handed out lights at two intersections, and it was very educational. Just sit there and watch and observe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody wish to speak to this item on Zoom? Madam Clark?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment then. So, let's do a motion. Motion made by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Mayor Protam Mar. Councilmember Reynolds, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion first. I do move that we approve staff recommendation and accept this grant, and hope that we'll also see if there's an opportunity through the grant on those. I know it's only two enforcement operations, but to see if there's an opportunity to come in with the education piece as well. I do want to express, this is, again, I started by saying, I'm really excited about most of the enforcement operations here. Reckless driving is, you know, we studied that it's the biggest issue in Costa Mesa in terms of street safety. It is a national trend that people are driving more recklessly, and injuries and deaths among cyclists and pedestrians and people in cars is rising in this country. So it really is an issue that we need to pay attention to, and I'm glad that we're paying attention to through this grant and other work as well. So, thank you. I didn't want that, you know, the other discussion to miss that point. And I am really excited about the opportunity to really collaborate, continue collaboration between our police department and the transportation team and our community organizations who are really trying to solve some of the safety challenges as well in every way we can. So, I'm excited for this, and I'm excited to pull over some red light runners and some speeders, distracted drivers, and then to continue to see more lights on bikes in Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? Okay, let's call for the question. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions. Ms. Barlow, just out of curiosity, what other cities have bike license requirements?
Very few. It was a very common thing in the 50s and 60s, but it's really not very common now. The most, those cities who do have bike licenses typically use that process to help ensure that the bikes are safe, that they are engraved with identification numbers to deter theft, that they use those funds to otherwise enhance their bicycle, street programs.
So, can someone get a ticket in Costa Mesa for not having a bike license?
Technically, under our code, they could. I don't believe we're issuing such citations, however. We're not.
Just since it seems like it's not something that's done often, and I was told growing up that I can ride a bike to school because I have a bike license, I feel like it's an undue burden for the community to have a license that we don't even enforce. So I'd like to bring back, if Councilwoman supports me, that policy to the council to perhaps amend it or change it or revit.
Can I suggest that what we do is bring you a report about, with some information about other cities that may do it, what the cost is, whether or not, you know, that kind of information, and then you can decide if you want to change it, repeal it, do something different.
That sounds lovely. Thank you, Ms. Barlow.
Perfect, thank you.
If I may add, our active transportation committee does have on its goals, making some recommendations related to the current municipal code for pedestrian and cyclists. So that might be the right avenue as well, but we can, we're certainly interested in this.
If we can do it.
We'll push it forward through that group before we bring it to the council.
Yeah, I just think it's, I mean, that's what I felt like the discussion with the police chief about. So I think if the issue is the licenses, let's just look at it with the proper eyes and see if we want to keep doing.
Okay, sounds good. I support the council member. Both of them. All right, next.
You need to vote, please.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Harper, can you, oh, there you go. It worked. A motion carries seven zero.
Awesome. Okay, now we have one public hearing item and one new business item. Let's power through, shall we? Public hearing item.
Yes.
Please read the title. Madam Clark.
This is a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan, identifying funding priorities for the Home American Rescue Plan, ARP, Allocation Plan. Presentation by Ms. Daly, grant administrator.
Good evening, mayor and city council.
You have the floor. Go ahead.
I'm sorry? Okay.
Just go.
Okay. So the item before you this evening is a request to hold a public hearing to approve the Home ARP Allocation Plan as a substantial amendment to the 2021-22 Annual Action Plan, and to authorize the submission of the plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So back in March 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, also known as ARP, or ARPA, or ARP, was signed into law. And a portion of those funds were allocated to local jurisdictions through the federal home investment partnerships program, our program called HOME, specifically to support homelessness assistance and supportive services. And these funds are referred to as HOME ARP funds. The HOME ARP funds are separate from the ARP funds allocated to the city. So if you hear about the ARP funds or the ARPA funds, it's a different grant, different So a little bit of background, Costa Mesa is eligible to receive $1,816,742 in HOME ARP funds. The city must do three things in order to be eligible, to engage, they must engage in consultation and public participation process, develop a HOME ARP allocation plan, and submit that plan to HUD as a substantial amendment to the city's 21-22 Annual Action This item did come to city council before. On May 3, there was a public hearing for the HOME ARP Allocation Plan, and it was continued, the item was continued pending additional information from staff. On June 21, staff brought a comprehensive overview of citywide rental assistance programs and various funding sources back to council to inform the council about those programs that are available. And the revised HOME ARP Allocation Plan was reposted in July and August and agendized for tonight's meeting. So, as I stated before, outreach and consultation is required to receive these funds. And so, the city has had consultation with local nonprofit organizations, the Orange County Continuum of Care. We created and distributed a HOME ARP survey to nonprofit organizations and got their feedback. It was also posted in English and Spanish on the city's website and has been advertised across all social media platforms. The allocation plan itself was posted in English and Spanish on the city's website for the required 15-day public comment period, actually, three times for 15-day public comment periods in May, July, and August. And a public hearing is required for adoption of the plan. So the feedback the city has received through the surveys and the engagement and consultation processes indicate a need to focus on affordable housing and supportive services for the community, including mental health and substance abuse supportive services, wraparound services such as transportation, legal services, credit repair, and assistance with tenant and landlord relations. and assistance with tenant and landlord relations. It was also learned that services for seniors, the disabled and monolingual Spanish speakers are definitely needed, and support for existing programs is helpful to ensure continuity of services. And so, the HOME ARP Allocation Plan, the city has to include the activities it intends on funding inside the plan. There are four eligible activity categories. And so, we can choose to fund development and supportive affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, or TBRA, supportive services as defined by HUD, or acquisition and development of non-congregate shelters. Staff is recommending funding for two of these eligible activities that would best serve the Costa Mesa residents based on the feedback, consultation, and resource that we've done. So, those two activities would be development and support of affordable housing. And number two is supportive services. So, McKinney-Vento supportive services are for people who are homeless, experiencing homelessness. Homelessness prevention services are for people who are at risk of homelessness. And then housing counseling services are available to both of those populations. So, we are recommending that we fund those two activities. The two activities we are not suggesting include tenant-based rental assistance. We currently already have a TBRA program, and it's funded through our HOME funds that we receive annually. And also, acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter. At this time, we do not believe that's a need because we do have the bridge, bridge shelter that has 70 beds, and we are currently working with the county, the project Home Key for 88 affordable units. It's a motel conversion project. So, the purpose of the HOME ARP funding is to provide homelessness assistance and supportive services to those who are homeless or at risk of being homelessness, of being homeless. And HUD does us a favor by telling us exactly who they mean about the people who are at risk of being homelessness or homeless. They identify them as qualifying individuals and families. And a qualifying individual or a family is either already homeless, has an annual income below 30% of the median income for the area, doesn't have resources or support networks to stop them from going to a shelter if, if they lose their housing. And they don't have permanent housing, so it could be somebody living in a hotel or living in a home of another, and also fleeing domestic violence. So, these are the people, the qualifying individuals or families who will be helped with this funding. And so, as mentioned previously, one of the identified activities that we are recommending being funded is supportive services. And so, these services are examples. Mental health services, childcare, landlord-tenant liaison. All of these supportive services would be used to help qualifying individuals. So, looking at that previous slide, the people who are either at risk of homelessness or homeless would be receiving these types of supportive services through this grant. The recommend, recommended allocations in the draft allocation plan include the maximum amount for administration and planning. So, that's 15% of the total grant at $272,510. And then the, the balance of the grant is split directly in half toward development and supportive affordable housing, and then also supportive services. And you can think of these two items for the two activities, the affordable housing and supportive services, as kind of placeholders because what we're going to do, we don't have a project identified right now. We're going to go out for a request for proposals. And then, once we identify the projects, then we can adjust those amounts accordingly to what's appropriate. So, following City Council and HUD approval of the city's allocation plan, we would solicit proposals for supportive services and affordable housing. And depending on the proposals we receive and the amount of funding allocated in either category, we can adjust them. So, the recommendations tonight are to hold this public hearing, approve the recommended allocation of $1,816,742 for the HOME ARP Allocation Plan, and adopt a resolution to approve the 21-22 substantial amendment to the action plan, authorize the city manager to submit it to HUD, and execute all required agreements, certifications, and documents, and authorize revenue and expense appropriations. So, that's the end of my presentation. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, sorry, Mayor Protem Mar.
No, it's all right. So, if we're still going to go out to bid, is this going to come back to council when we decide who to make grant awards to?
Yes.
Okay. So, that, it wasn't clear from, from the language if we're authorizing the allocation of the funds as well? No?
We're authorizing the allocation for those two specific activities, but not the specific organization that would receive the funds.
Okay. And how much flexibility do we, supportive services is broad. The list of things that you mentioned, there were a lot of bullets on that slide. To what extent do we expect nonprofits or service providers to come back and specify which of the things they plan to do or think would be effective, and how prescriptive do we plan to be?
Well, the allocation plan is kept broad purposely because we want to make sure that any organization that is able to provide supportive services in whatever capacity where there's a gap right now, we want them to solicit for the funds. So, it's, it's just supportive services and, and that one slide that showed all of the different things that you can, that you can fund.
Yeah, that's pretty broad.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of different service providers in the city. So, I'm imagining this is maybe a chance for them to get creative and fill some of the holes that they've seen in the system as it stands right now. I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding that right. Nate's nodding along with me, so I think I got that right. And then on the affordable housing side, does it have to be, you know, a brand-new project? I know we've got a couple of affordable housing developers who have floated ideas for various projects. Are you looking for, I guess, I'll refer, what are you looking for from, from that as part of that RFP process?
Again, it, it's the same thing. It, it's just an RFP, and we're waiting to see what comes back. It's not a lot of money for an affordable housing project, so it really would have to be a project that's nearly fully funded if they wanted to receive funds. But if we don't put that activity in the allocation plan, then it's not, we are not able to fund that in the future unless we amend, substantially amend the plan, which means going through this process all over again.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilmember Harper?
Yeah, I have kind of similar questions. So, so an affordable housing project done by a private contractor needs some extra money? Could it go towards that?
Yes, sir, it would be gap financing. So, a developer would submit a proposal for a project with, they need some extra money, and that's what they would ask the city for. So, we'd step in and partner with them on the project.
Okay. And the same thing, I guess, with supportive services. If there's an organization that's doing something, you can add to that. They just enhance what they're doing. What's, where's the 272 go? The 272,000 go, the admin? Where does that bucket of money end up?
That's administration and planning. So, that would be staff salaries we have to monitor. We have to make sure that they're spending the money correctly and following the regulations.
So, they have to document their time and that they're spending it on this, and then it's allocated to fund, then there could be some left over, could be not. What happens to money like that, that say they, say they document 100,000 administrative services? I guess that's all you, and then you spend the other money and it's gone.
That's, it stays with the city. The administration is the city administering the plan.
Right, but you have to document, I, this is purely administrative. I'm just curious about, so, I, I spend the other 772 twice, it's gone, and my staff only required $100,000 of staff time. There's 172 left. Does that go back to the government, or does it sit with the city?
No, we could reallocate it to an activity.
You get to reallocate?
Yeah, we don't have to use.
Don't have to? You just allocate?
All of it, yeah.
Okay, that's just what they allow?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all.
Now, if I could just add really quick, the, the HOME ARP funds don't expire till 2030. So, we have a potential of eight years to spend these funds. So, we're not in a huge, huge rush. It also gives us an opportunity to think more into the future, so have a multi-year service rather than just a, a one-time thing, extend it out over three or four years and, and have it be this sustainable thing that's, that's got some legs to it, that can go. That, those are all the things that we're going to take into consideration.
Okay, so, I am intrigued by this. I think it's a great opportunity. I really appreciate the work that you've done. I just have a couple of questions. So, just so you let know where I'm coming from, and it's been mentioned, I think, by Mayor Protem Mar and acknowledged by you that $770,000 to put together an affordable housing project is really a drop in the bucket. I mean, we saw that with the Motel 6 project, how we allocated 5 million of federal funds toward, I think, you know, finding a, a, a cost of like 40 million. So, my thinking here, you know, not to suggest, I mean, what you're going to see in a motion later, but my thinking is it would be better to allocate more money to the services, and then we could, maybe all of the money to the services. And then we can have some expectation of our service providers, our nonprofits, that over a multi-year period, we would be able to provide some support for them. They'd be able to budget for it and whatnot, you know? I mean, I'm sure there'd be some, some risk to it. So, if we did that, if we said tonight, we want $1.8 million to go into supportive services, zero to go for affordable housing. What I hear you telling me is, if there was an opportunity, this great opportunity for like a small gap funding, what we would have to do between some, and then happen sometime between now and 2030 is, we just have to do what we're doing right now. And then we can, so, and, and then if we just have a hearing or some council in 2027 has a hearing, then they could reallocate these funds to that small gap, drop in the bucket, to make some housing project go, right? Okay, good. You guys are saying, you gotta, you gotta say audibly, yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, I don't have any other questions. Anybody else? Let's open it up to the public.
Hello, this is my first city council meeting, so I guess I'm supposed to say my name? And anything else I'm supposed to do to start this off?
No, you're very welcome. You don't have to say your name either, but you're welcome.
Oh, well, I'm Mike Rothmeyer. I'm glad to be a Costa Mesa resident. I just have a question about the, we've talked about the supply of money. Have we talked about the demand from the population? Do we have any idea how we would like to use these funds? It sounds like we're getting a bucket of money, and we're trying to figure out what to do with it and who wants to earn it. But, very little discussion on the population that we're going to be serving. So, I was just wondering if there could be some discussion on that. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Good job. So, anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak to this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, closed public comment. And I just made a motion. So, I'm going to move that we allocate, for the time being, the entire 1.8616742 to supportive services.
What about administration?
And adminis, well, including the administration.
Okay.
Yeah, including the administration piece. Is that in here? I'm just looking to see what, yeah. So, it's the staff, basically, it's the staff's recommendation. The only change, the staff recom, staff's recommendation is instead of doing 50-50, it's 100% to supportive services. That's, that's my motion. Oh, I got a second.
Well, I, yeah, actually, can you remove, well, I'll ask first. Would the maker of the motion consider pulling $100,000 out to allocate for affordable housing as merely a placeholder? I can think of a couple of projects that could benefit from some funds in the design and development phase. Do I think that 700 is going to make a difference? No, no, but I don't want it to be, have zero opportunity in the future.
I have no problem with that. As a matter of fact, I think we were just talking to Ms. Lee. That's actually better, right? Because we can, if, if we do that, if we have 100,000, then we can reallocate the funds without having to come back for a hearing. Is that true?
We can reallocate funds up to 45% between categories as, and that doesn't qualify as a major amendment. Once you go past that 45%, then we would be doing a public hearing and resubmitting to HUD, but that's the only difference. I don't think it's a bad idea to have two categories, but at the end of the day, it's also at the discretion of the council.
45% of the total dollar value or, I mean, I don't want it to be 45% of 100,000.
The total dollar value.
Okay.
1.8 million.
Okay, thank you.
So, that's perfectly fine. I'll accept that. And so, it would be 1.1,716,742 going to supportive services, 100,000 going to affordable housing, and then, you know, also the administrative piece that was mentioned in the staff report. So, that's my motion, as friendly amended. Any, oh, I think I've talked about it already. I don't need to say any more words. Do you have, do you have anything more to say?
I just wanted to address the gentleman's question. So, this actually comes on the heels of spending the HOME dollars, the staff mentioned. And we had a, a very robust discussion about the extent to which rental assistance is needed, the populations that we're serving, and, and sort of the gaps in between. So, you know, rental assistance, for example, can keep somebody or get someone a new home but can't necessarily keep them in their home. There's all kinds of like federal rules. And so, I apologize that it sounds like we're kind of talking about this out of nowhere, but it, it does come on the heels of a, a previous discussion that kind of identified where some of those gaps are. And, and that's really why I'm looking forward to leaving this a little bit open-ended. I see Mr. Stevenson in the audience. I, you know, I know there's a number of nonprofits that certainly work very closely with the population that's intended to be served by this grant, and I imagine already have some sense of where the holes are and the gaps that they could continue to help to fill. So, supportive of the motion. Thanks for bringing this forward. I've been wondering what we were going to do with the, the last little bit to allocate, right? We've talked about ARP money, we've talked about home money, and we've talked about some home ARP money, but this is, this is it. So, I don't think we'll see any more discussion about this for, I don't know, a couple, a couple of years, right? At this point, for, we've got our program set. We'll get RFPs out the door, and hopefully, we can use the funds to actually make some change in the community. Thank you.
All right, good. Thanks. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. We have one more item, which is new business item number one. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
Thank you. This is execution of a sub-resume agreement with the County of Orange to accept grant funds for the benefit of the bridge shelter. Presentation by Mr. Robbins, Neighborhood Improvement Manager.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Sorry for the delay. All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm excited to give you a brief presentation tonight, but an exciting one at that. It's regarding the County of Orange grant to benefit the bridge shelter. So, first, some quick background, as we heard earlier from Ms. Daly. In March of 2021, the American Rescue Plan Act was signed into law. What she didn't make, mention was that there was a, some of that money that was siphoned off to create what's called the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. 350 billion was taken from the ARPA initiative and put into the SLFRF fund. 616.8 million of that, the County of Orange received back in March. So, in May of 2022, the, the Board of Supervisors allocated $5 million in SLFRF funds to organizations within the county's 5th district to support shelter and support services for people experiencing homelessness. And then, just very recently, in August of this year, city staff submitted to the county a request for funding in the amount of 100,000 to benefit the bridge shelter and its guests. And just a quick note, the initial conversation about this funding was with Supervisor Bartlett. So, a big, big thank you to her and reaching out to the city to accept these funds. So, thank you to her for that. So, just a brief overview of the different activities that we're contemplating with this 100,000. The money's broken up into two buckets. The first bucket is essentially FFNE, so furniture fixtures and equipment for the shelter. These are all going to be small item purchases to include things like storage management supplies. So, as guests exit the shelter, their belongings are held for a period of 90 days. So, we have to have storage for that, so just different storage facility equipment. We're going to purchase two brand-new computers and printers for the computer lab, as you know. As you know, the shelter is, it's a full-service shelter, so when guests there need to go online to search for jobs or to search for apartments, they need to be provided with the equipment to do that. So, we're going to, we're going to upgrade their equipment there. Recreation activities, including community garden, just various activities that they can do outside of their housing plan, which, as we all know, is much-needed recreation. Various technology upgrades with iPads and things for the shelter. And then, probably the most, well, one of the most exciting is equipment and supplies for the kitchen, as most of us in this room know, Bracken's Kitchen was awarded the full-time commercial kitchen operator contract for the bridge shelter. Of course, they've been having an amazing time, but they showed up on site and gave us a list of things that they needed. And so, this is a great opportunity to purchase those items so they can, they can provide the highest level of service possible. And then, of course, the second bucket is going to services. In fact, they're going to an organization called Trellis, who is an amazing local nonprofit that helps so many people and has some amazing people working for them. Trellis does what's called the Back-to-Work Program, and people that are enrolled in the Back-to-Work Program become part of what's called the Community Impact Team, or the CIT. The CIT is an awesome program that gives people that are experiencing homelessness the ability to get back into the workforce without getting into a full-time job. So, it gives them part-time, temporary employment with a little bit of compensation, but it's more about growing themselves as a person rather than, again, securing a full-time job. So, Trellis provides this. They've, they've done some amazing things. I have some really brief stats. I think the most important stats, though, address the collaboration that Trellis does with other nonprofits, local churches, community members, businesses. So, it's, of course, about serving the person, but it's about connecting to the community at large. They've connected with over 20 businesses, over 11 nonprofits, over 10 churches, and over 17 people to produce 11 full-time jobs for enrollees. They facilitated 20 of their enrollees to get into housing. 23 people that weren't at the bridge shelter, they spoke to and got them to do an intake into the bridge shelter, so they're constantly moving people from the streets into the shelter into housing. There's, there's a ton of people at the Saturday meetings, and then, over 40 people, so over the past year, 40 people have made over $500 as part of the program. And again, these are people that are literally homeless, struggling for their every meals, can make up to $500 through a program like this. It's pretty special. So, having said that, I would ask that the council would authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute the subrecipient agreement between the city and the county to accept the grant funds in an amount of $100,000 to support shelter and supportive services, assuming that you all authorize that. You would also authorize the revenue expense allocations in the amount of $100,000 respectively, and then, of course, authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Trellis in a not-to-exceed amount of $70,000 to administer, excuse me, to expand the back-to-work program and the CIT. That concludes my presentation. As Mayor Protem mentioned, we do have Ian Stevenson here in the crowd, who is the executive director of Trellis and an amazing person, so he can answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I just make one minor change? I didn't realize this, but because this, we're doing a subrecipient agreement from the county, we will be, in turn, doing a subrecipient agreement with Trellis. So, it technically won't be a professional services agreement. It will be a subrecipient agreement. Just wanted to clarify that.
And that's just, just the nomenclature of it? That's?
Correct. So, we will be asking you, when you, when you approve it, to authorize us to enter into a subrecipient agreement with Trellis.
Got it. Okay. Any questions, council? Okay. Councilmember Reynolds.
Oh, no, that's, I'm prepared to second.
Oh, you're prepared? Oh, we, oh, I don't, we haven't opened it up to, to the public yet. So, we just had the, unless I'm?
Yeah, no, sorry. It's my fault. I lost track that we hadn't opened a public comment, and I hit the make motion button. So, you can clear that.
Hey, it's, it's all good. Okay. So, now, we're going to?
Really excited, okay?
It's, we're going to open, good presentation, no questions, apparently. We're going to open it up to the public. I don't see anybody rushing up to the podiums. Oh, here, except for one person.
Rush, rush.
In slow motion. Okay. Reverend Stevenson, you have, you have the floor.
I will comment on a couple of levels. First of all, I just want to thank the council for just your support. Behind the CIT program in the past, we were awarded Community Development Grant CV resources to really help get this program moving. And the results, Nate gave you several statistics, but they've absolutely been above and beyond all that. And what we are excited about with this particular grant money is the opportunity to help those who are experiencing homelessness and home insecurity, the opportunity to really do these transitional projects in our city. We've been working with Raj's team to be able to, to actually take teams of people who are experiencing homelessness, who in the past may have been a problem or a challenge in our city, to start really giving back to our city by helping clean the parks, by helping do particular projects that not only give them pride and self-esteem personally, but also help give them pride and self-esteem for our community. And if you would see and hear some of the stories of the individuals that have been part of this program and seen them go from a place where their heads were hung low, and they didn't think they had anything to offer or anything to contribute, to now being part of a team and seeing that they can make a difference in the community, it's just an incredibly beautiful thing to, to watch and see. And then, to see these folks get into our shelter and get into housing, and then, through this grant, we will also be helping support them as they get into housing. So, we deliver furniture that's been donated into their new apartment. I mean, it's just, it's just an incredible thing, and I want to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. What a time for our little bell to wake up. Finally, the last person. All right. Okay. So, we're good? So, anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk? Okay. Closed public comments now. The thing you guys wanted to do before, do it now.
I'll move to approve the stack of recommendation with the amendment to number three, that we're authorizing a subrecipient agreement to Trellis.
Okay. Mayor Protem, do you want to say anything to support your motion?
I, I mean, I don't know if anybody else felt this way when you were reading the list of Trellis's accomplishments, especially the CIT, but I, I got chills. I think that this is, this is really incredible work, and, you know, Mr. Stevenson, you are a treasure of Costa Mesa because of the work that you are leading in our community. So, thank you very much, and I'm, you know, honored to support this. I, I wish it was more than $70,000, but, but, but we'll work on that. Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, I agree with all of Mayor Protem Mar's comments. And Pastor Stevenson, as you said, you wish we could see and hear stories from the program. Where did he go? Oh, there he is. I do wish we could see and hear stories, and I, I think one thing we did when we first opened the bridge shelter was really push out some of the stories of success of our shelter and that whole support services. So, I know our award-winning video team is, is behind the wall here. If we could start that program again, where, you know, maybe there's a monthly story of the impact, the whole network is having, I think that's really, a really positive part of the program to, to share those stories and to, to use that to continue getting volunteers to participate in the program as well. And I want to show that I think that's a really powerful part of the, the work that this team does, is, is not just supporting folks who need help at the time, but really connecting them with community members who want to help and create opportunities for people who've, who've fallen on hard times to feel like they're part of a community again. So, sharing those stories, I think, would be really valuable. On the Bracken side, I was really excited to see that we're taking volunteers again. So, if we can pump that out, especially with, with schools having started, I know lots of people are looking for volunteer opportunities. So, let's share that, that we're open again for volunteers. Thank you.
Councilmember Harlan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I was all prepared to make the motion, but I, I can't blame my colleagues for not being able to contain their enthusiasm, and I share that as well. I think that any opportunity we have to build capacity in our community through our nonprofit organizations, any opportunity we have to build on those successes that we've heard, and more importantly, to really build on the infrastructure that we've developed. And by that, I mean, not only the bridge shelter, but the people who are involved in that. I think it's a great thing for our city, so I wholeheartedly support this motion.
Excellent. Any other council members wish to speak? So, yeah, I support the motion, too. I think it's great, and thank you. And I just had an idea, not to put any more pressure or work on staff, but maybe in the future, in the next few months, we can do some type of an open house like we did when we were doing the shelter, and we had an open house, and we explained what we intended to do, and now, it's been a period of time afterwards, and we can come back and touch the base with the community and show what we've accomplished, kind of a similar format to what we did with tables and stuff like that. Not a lot of like boring speeches, but a lot of good information for people. Something to think about, you know, in the next few months.
Mr. Mayor, actually, I was having a conversation with somebody who's sort of on, on the ground with some of our efforts, and they were asking, actually, if we would consider doing some kind of like an appreciation for all, all of the volunteers and the social workers and everything else, if we could sort of combine our approach. I think that would be helpful to recognize all those people who are doing the good work on the ground.
Well, that's actually a good point. And we could, it's, so it's September 6, right? So, traditionally, we always had around Thanksgiving, we had a big lunch. And because of COVID, it got kind of put on the shelf. So, let's do that. I support that. I supported, and, you know, last time, I think it was at the Costa Mesa Country Club, there's lots of great places to have it. But, yeah, let's have that appreciation lunch. Okay. But first, let's call for the question.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Do any other council, did any council members have anything that they wish to say that they weren't able to say before? No? Okay. In that case, we'll adjourn the meeting in remembrance and, and memory and respect of Salvador Avila, who, you know, as I said, was a great family man and certainly has enhanced our community with El Ranchito Restaurant. Thank you.